I'd like to call this county commission workshop order please, we don't want to lose the stand, Mr. Orick please send a prayer, Mr. Stanfield in the pledge.
Let's take a moment of silence for the first family. Thank you, your heavenly Father, for this good day and blessings in our life, watching an offer from your Jesus, showing us the way that you have us travel. Bless each and everyone that's here to see, your heavenly Father, give us knowledge and understanding to make the best decisions for our county, for our people. Thank you, Lord, for all that you do for us, bless our first responders, our soldiers of the scene. Heavenly Father, bless our country, your Jesus. Heavenly Father, bless our children. Heavenly Father, reaching, teaching, guide us to see, your heavenly Father, show us the way that you have us to go. Keep a hedge built about our children, your heavenly Father, if you will. Thank you for all that you do, most of all, for the plan of salvation. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you see. Roll call, please.
Charles Bear.
Here.
Dwayne Bear.
Here.
Johnny Bruce.
Here.
Ralph Davis.
Here.
Michael Douglas. Whit Gwens.
Yeah.
Robert Higginbotham. Tyler Payne.
Here.
Scotty Kidd.
Here.
Jeffrey Colmar.
Here.
Lisa Lester. Dr. Marlowe.
Here.
Sue Nance. Rusty Orick.
Here.
Scott Stanfield.
Here.
Eleven present, four absent.
I'd like to state that we do have a quorum. I noticed that we have Mr. Kidd, who's a new commissioner in the second district. Mr. Kidd, if you'd like to come up, there's a empty seat right there for you. You'd like to come on up? And also, we have our new elected county mayor, Mr. Lynch. If you'd like to come up, you're more than welcome. Please come on up.
Yeah, there's a seat right over there. Right on the front.
Hey, Jack? Jack? We said you could come and sit beside him. Hey, get used to it. I would also like to state that the workshop will be an hour and a half. If we wish to extend it, it takes us a simple majority vote by the body to do so in thirty minutes. I'd like to thank WLF, volunteer times for their live feeds and take the late. Also, I'd like to thank the LaFollette Press, and thank them for being here tonight. Also, I'd like to thank everyone that's here, that's come out. You know, it's a, for some of us, it's been a long year. A long four years for some of us, you know? But, hey, next month, we start a new chapter in Campbell County history. So, in saying that, you know, I kind of lost the words right now, you know? Guys, congratulations, sir. Let's get some congratulations. I'm looking forward to working with you gentlemen. And also, we have, I think, three others. Is that correct? Beverly Hall, Dwayne Gibson, and is it?
And Mr. Sharp.
Mr. Sharp, yes. Tyler? What is it? Just Mr. Sharp's first name?
Derek.
Derek? And David Ackidge, yes. David had the sort of Woods and Forests, so I had to pick him. In saying that, you know, we usually wait until the last for our public comments. I'm gonna go ahead and move it up front and let those people speak and stuff and get out of here, because we might be here for a little while, so that way they can move on out. In saying that, you hear anyone come on up? Introduce yourself.
I am Gary Beasley, and my wife Karen Thomas Beasley is with me tonight. I appreciate the opportunity to come talk to the members of the commission. We want to express our gratitude for your time and your service. We want to congratulate those of you who stood for election and won, and we want to thank those of you who have served and will continue to do good things for our community in the future. I had a boss at UT before I retired, and he told me, Gary, don't you bring me a problem unless you bring me a solution or two? And I'll pick from them. Well, I love Chuck, and we did that. One of the things he gave me was this quote from Molly Ivins years ago. You may see it on social media now. But Molly Ivins said, listen to people who are talking about how to fix what's wrong, not the ones who just work people into a snit over the problems. Listen to the people who have ideas about how to fix things and not who blame others. I'm not here to blame anybody for anything. I'm not here to blow smoke, throw shade, or rain on anybody's fun or parade this evening. But I've got a couple of things that concern those of us who are year-round residents and a lot of people, a lot of people, who join us on weekends in the Cedar Creek area. If you don't believe there's a lot of people, try driving across the bridge one Saturday evening, okay? You'll understand what I'm saying. Twenty thirteen, my wife and I came back to the area and built a house out there above the lake, and we searched for telephone services, because AT&amp;T just wouldn't work there. And Verizon was good. It was good till about twenty nineteen. And twenty nineteen, after that big storm, big flood, damage to towers, things of that nature that they explained to me, we didn't have service so good. But something else happened. The proliferation of multifamily rentals has just exploded out there, especially on the weekends. It's almost like going to Myrtle Beach, and costs about as much, too. They've also built up above Mariners Point, or beyond Mariners Point, between us and Mariners Point, a large RV park. Now, that RV park is between us and a tower out there. We do not have any connectivity. We do not have any 911 service at all on the weekends, or I won't say at all. It's very, very seldom that we ever have on the weekends between Memorial Day and Labor Day, okay? And that's because of the lack of adequacy of the bandwidth out there. People wake up, get on their devices, and sucked out. There is nothing. We can't even get on a telephone to call somebody, you know, at that point in time. But let me tell you a little bit else, you know, that's going on with that. You know, I passed around, or you've got some notebooks there with some pictures. I appeared before the commission once before and advocated for a no jumping ordinance, which you passed. The county highway department put up signs, no jumping, okay? That's state law, okay? No jumping is state law. But what we have now, those signs were torn down almost immediately. They were not replaced. Highway Department painted the bridge. If you'd see some of that graffiti out there, it would be embarrassing, embarrassing to all of us. What we're looking at is the possibility of a real catastrophe in that area, because you've got a whole lot of people crowded in there with fast boats, other water devices on the weekend. You have no 911 service, and I've talked with the 911 director, who's told me that people have had to be transported by boat to other areas of the lake just to get on a telephone and call in a chopper. The chopper does sit down on that bridge. We watch it, you know, quite frequently to do that, which, that's a good thing. But we do have some problems out there, and they're growing kinds of problems. One of the things that's going on now is as I was looking into this, I was told by the 911 director that it's not only at Cedar Creek, it's not only at the bridge area, but there are other areas around the lake, and there are areas in the mountain where we have these side-by-side UTV trails, that a number of people who have been injured there in UTVs, there was no way to call emergency services for those. Now, I've talked with Verizon, my carrier. I started locally. I went to Knoxville. I went tier one, I went tier two, and they won't let me talk to tier three yet, all right? But I have talked with those folks. They are aware of the lack of service, you know, in this particular area. What I suggest with all this is some working partnerships. And I'll pass my notes around, and you can see what I'm recommending, is that there is a committee of folk who are county commissioners, who represent those areas, who are from the county mayor's office, sheriff's office. And that's another thing, too, because I don't know if you saw what happened in Soddy Daisy last month, but Soddy Daisy, that area around Chattanooga, there are two large bridges over the river. It got to where they couldn't drive across them. So, the county said, look, this has got to go. So, they decided to enforce it. It is state law, you cannot pop a bridge, you cannot jump from a bridge, you cannot take a kayak off a bridge, which if you go on, you know, social media and Google the Cedar Creek Jumping Bridge, you'll see people stopping traffic and taking kayaks, okay, off the bridge. A lot of fun, but there was a father the other day, had two little children out there, and they had life jackets on. He was trying to encourage them to jump into the water. I called him over, and I'm from my phone, I showed him one of those pictures of that rebar sticking up a few feet underneath that water. Now, one of those rolls by earthquake or gets washed out or something, you've got somebody impaled down there. An impaled person, do you know how long it takes them to bleed out? You can't get that chopper in there fast enough, especially if you can't call it. That's where I am now. I would recommend you, committee, to look, to see if this truly is a problem. It is a problem for those of us who live there year-round and who are, you know, good old property taxpayers. But what about a problem for attracting people who would like to retire there or live there and work from home? You know, work-from-home types, they're not a big expense for you, all right? They're really not. But they add two jobs, they add two tax-based resources, they add to those kinds of things that can build our community. But they're not going to locate, they're not going to be here. And a lot of people who are renting these $5,000 a week rentals, it's a possibility they're not going to either if they continue to see graffiti like that. And you saw it. I don't know if you're ashamed of it, but not him. If they also continue not to be able to get up in the morning and call their broker or their attorney or whomever, we all work all the time. So, what happens then? I think there are some opportunities here. I'm willing to work. I know other people who are willing to work. I have connections. Lots of you have connections and would truly like to help. I'll be around if you have questions. I pruned out my comments, and, thank you, I appreciate it.
Scotty, just a second. Zach, is this something you can bring up in your infrastructure meeting?
Mr. Chairman.
What, Scotty didn't do it right. Go ahead, Scotty.
Mr. Peabody, the one thing, of course, I represent the first, the second, and that's my own friend, I've born and raised right there.
Right there, I know.
And sadly to say, may Bobby have told you, but I have had a first-tersred cousin to drown there in that west, off of that bridge.
Yes.
So...
There have been a number of people in the ten years that Karen and I have lived there, but I've owned that property for sixty, over sixty years. And I know the numbers of people who have died there, okay? People who have been caught up in old barbed wire and drowned, people who get things, so yes.
Are you, they, you know, we passed a law of not to jump.
It's a state law.
State law, that's right. And we weren't able to do anything with the graffiti, right? Is that right? We couldn't get that under control, except when we did put signs up or...
It's a state law, so...
No water in, et cetera, et cetera. You haven't, that area, and I'm sorry to say, we got a new administration in, I'm not taking against any of the sheriff's department or everything like that, because they have a lot of traffic and everything to take care of, you know? Are you able to, Karen, did you ever see the THP over there or anybody trying to help you? I mean, is it not, you're not getting, is it fair to say you're not getting any enforcement at all? Is that correct? I mean...
I can give you my observations.
Okay, please do.
And I do not intend to denigrate anyone who is currently in office or out of office or anything, okay? I have seen people ignore people blocking the bridge. I have seen law enforcement ignore people blocking the bridge and drive on across. I have three times attempted to meet with the former sheriff, and I was unsuccessful for whatever reason in getting a meeting with him at that point in time. I'm hoping that in the future, we can have a bit more proactive, if you will, law enforcement. And I'm not saying that because, again, I certainly don't want to rain on anyone's fun. Jumping into the water is fun, but dying's not.
The major rebar that you're seeing is over to the far right, right there, is that correct?
There's several different places. In the winter, another problem we have, too, is it's beginning to attract, or it hasn't begun, it has attracted drugs. Now, the sheriff's department did come out, I'll say they came out one time, when I called and said, there's a meth lab underneath the bridge. You can see the canisters there. That's been cleared away, but now people are lighting fires underneath the bridge. If that superstructure ever catches on fire, I'm afraid you've got another problem building. And I see fires under there at night a lot from, for my houses.
Thank you, Peabody. I think that you're going to bring it on the committee and...
Yes.
I thank you.
Rusty, and then Dwayne.
Mr. Peabody, and you may not be aware of this, but the county and the communication committee has been working with the state on a multiple million-dollar grant. And we've got, I think the last count I had, we had two more people joining, two more entities, carriers, that's trying to get broadband. And I think what we had gave, that committee had gave to those entities, took care of that section, the whole section in that area, Cedar Creek, Appleton Hollow. Now, when's that coming? I have no clue. But it's been a while. We're also working, it's not just with you all, you mentioned the UTVs. And we've got problems in Jellicoe with rescue squads. Probably gonna be having a meeting pretty soon with Vital Volunteer Fire Department, because they don't have any service, you know, and they're all dealing with the same thing. When I reach out to all the cell phone carriers, the big ones, has told us all the way through, we've done got you. We've got your service, we're charging you bill, you just have to leave with what we've got. Now, if the county wants to go on endeavor and build a million-dollar tower, they won't use it. And that's not right. It's not right.
I understand towers, I understand leasing. I wrote one of the biggest grants in the state of Tennessee for an educational development program, the Appalachian Educational Lab, where we had low-altitude satellites, we had IR, we had all of that. What I'm just trying to do right now is bring this to the forefront and say it's something that, you know, we're beyond waiting. We really need that service, because I feel like that down the road, there could be a real catastrophe and someone, you know, could really get hurt with that.
Well, I do, I also do think that one of them's going to get this grant at what we're here in on our side. And it's going to be awarded, Zach, do you remember the dates? It's been going through the state. There was like a 407 designation, and three of them, that means you can't cross lines, if you understand that.
I understand that.
And I heard probably a month ago that there's two entities...
Are you bidding it out to leases?
Well, we actually, we didn't do a RFP. We actually just opened it up for everyone. We could have done it either way, but whoever comes across the state and gets that will be, will be pleased. But there's two entities that don't have to have that designation, that stuck their names in the hat, and one of them is bringing federal money. So, and I think they're wanting to take over the whole county, and that's great. It's, you know, competition is a great thing.
Absolutely.
But anyway, we'll be having a meeting probably this, by the end of August with the communication committee, you're welcome to come.
I'd be happy to. Thank you very much.
Dwayne? My understanding, there's actually a Verizon tower that you need to go up not too far from the bridge. It's on, on the 3900 block of Cedar Creek Road. It's a Verizon tower, and it's supposed to be up by the end of year.
They did not inform me of that.
My buddy, his father-in-law, he signed the contract with them.
There's an inside track, then, that they did not tell me about?
Yeah. So, it's supposed to be up, that the contract's already signed, and I think it'll be up by the end of year.
They don't open the road, open the drug section?
I'm not sure exactly. I saw it's on 3900 block of Cedar Creek Road.
Thirty-nine hundred.
Probably what, two, two, three minutes from the bridge?
Well, I'm negotiating now with utility companies, because, as you know, most of that property out there across the lake from me has now been sold. And they're planning a three-phase development of that particular piece of property. They're already planning the electrical, the gas, the whole nine yards, and because they have to cross my property, I'm already in negotiations with them. So, we're talking about a whole lot of people potentially, you know, in that particular area, which brings on both.
You don't have to wait to sign a state, it's behind you.
Don't remind me. I should have bought it.
Okay, real quick. This is, this is my scenario, being old street, sports, common sense man. First of all, the new administration sheriff's department, Mr. Barton, probably needs to be contacted by all of us, this body, one at a time or whatever, or he needs to be here so we can talk to him about this issue. That being said, you can get this under control, especially if it's, if it's a state law already about jumping off of this bridge, all right? And Mr. Chairman, I want to thank you for giving this opportunity, because I'm about done. Now, that being said, this graffiti we're talking about is, can get under control, too. Well, you say, well, Scotty, how you do that? Well, first of all, when graffiti is at, we as a body are responsible for funding the sheriff's department, et cetera, et cetera. You can resolve that problem by, you know, letting, you know, putting a little bit of money up to the side for painting and stuff. This is my theory, okay? Because I'm making perfectly good sense. You put a little paint, you keep up with that, you have somebody, one person, one person to control that. Say, hey, look, John, Ted, Steve, you go out there and paint that bridge, and you keep on it, and then, guys, you'll think, well, Scotty, you're kind of crazy to do it. No, I'm not, because you, you assign somebody to that, because they, you can take inmates, Mr. Chairman, to do that. So, you take, you do that, and then as far as the, the, you know, diving off the bridges and stuff like that, that also can be controlled as well. So, you've got, you've got the controlling of the graffiti, you want to be monitoring people jumping off of that bridge, and, you know, you can, you can monitor that. So, it all plays a good role in all of that. It just has to be enforced, the word is enforced.
Thank you, Mr. Kidd. Mr. Peabody, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We will be getting in touch with you.
All right, thank you.
Isaac?
I would introduce myself, but I think y'all are all pretty familiar with me and probably dread to see me anytime I show up.
Isaac, can I say something?
What's that?
We have seen you grow up, so...
That's true.
Go ahead.
Okay, I've already talked to Johnny about this, but I would like to show you the situation. This is in Cherry Bottom on Redbud Lane, and it's the, there's a culvert that runs under this road. And I've got a friend who is on full-time oxygen, she's about six years old, and she lives right after that. And this has come up and actually washed her gravel driveway away. And it gets into her yard, and she said at one time it was above her mailbox. And she says, I don't know if the culvert's too small or if the ditch is need to be cleaned out, she said, but something's wrong. And I like Ron Dilbeck a lot, I like all y'all a lot. But she said that Mr. Dilbeck came and put, put that in there, right there. And she said, it rained the next day, and it turned back into that. And she said, you know, what happens here is this washes down into here, and then that creates more problem down in this side of the creek. So, like you said, you was going to talk to Mr. Dilbeck and...
Isaac, I'm meeting with Mr. Dilbeck in the morning, and I'll be more than happy. Matter of fact, I'm going to be down in that area and stuff, because we have some residents from the Shady Cove area here tonight, and we're going to be down and look at Third Road, and this gives us an opportunity to go down and...
I'll even give you her phone number, too, if you want to talk.
Okay, if you don't mind, put it on there. But I don't remember that road right there. What it is, is the fact that the ditch line just needs to be cleaned down and stuff and everything, the water backing up.
Right. And I told her, I believe that the county will bring a load of gravel if your driveway has been washed out, and it's the county's fault. And I told her that, too, so, well, I mean, I didn't say for sure, I just said, because I was hoping somebody was superintendent.
That's something that, yes, too, our county attorney and the road superintendent.
Yeah.
Scott?
I do know, you, you're talking about the road, what's that road called there?
Redbud Lane.
Redbud Lane. I do know, since you have other people here about the县... I do know that, that Ron is definitely working on that, too. I know that.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
I'll put the name of the, and the number on there.
I will. And also, I put two on two separate issues. And I was here about two months ago, and I told y'all about the medical coroner, and I'm just going to be on y'all's case about every month now, because I've talked to different commissioners, and I'm just going to be on y'all's case about every month, so, until something happens. Just getting lined. I'll get, I'll get every one of these lined up, yeah, everybody.
Hey, Isaac, you're a taxpayer. You've got the roof to be here.
That's right. That's right.
Isaac, make sure you put her name and number on there.
I will, and I'll get it done. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Good job, Governor. Thank you. Mayor?
Mr. Chairman, for our next week, we, we got an opportunity to host a, another fishing tournament, and so Tennessee Department of Tourist Development has been working very hard through the Bill Dance Signature Lakes Program with the Tennessee Tourism Committee for the last several years. And Mr. Tumlin has come here tonight to talk to us. We have a JCB on Thursday night as well, but there is a financial commitment to bring this event, but this is with the posture, your loan is young part, and the fact that we're going to be sowing grass there in the next few months. There's an opportunity coming for Campbell County, and I'd like to turn the floor over to Dennis to talk to you about it.
Mr. Dennis, talk.
Thank y'all, appreciate it, and thank y'all for your service. As a former county commissioner myself, I know the hours y'all put in, and it's really thankless. Mayor, thank you for your service. You're well-respected and on our team and in Nashville, and you've served a lot of people, so thank you for your service. But we, well, I sent this down to Mayor a couple weeks ago, and we knew that you had this workshop coming up, so you've got this beautiful asset behind you called Norris Lake, and it's really attracting a lot of attention. I've had an RFP, the, the actual tournament itself, don't want the name disclosed, so I'm, I'm keeping that close. I'm happy to talk to y'all one-on-one. If you want to call me, I'll leave my number. It is, it's going to be about a $20,000 local commitment, and we're prepared to do some matching out of our department if we can put it together. It's a national-level event, we receive national publicity. You're going to have about 500 people for the week. They'll be in town for about seven days, about 500 visitors plus spectators. It's about a $1.5 million economic impact. If you're in the hospitality or restaurant business that serves your visitors, you're going to appreciate it. And I'm happy to answer any questions. I think the proper, if I understand it correctly, JDCDB would be the vehicle that would sign the contract and all those things, but I just really wanted to inform you, and I'm here to have, answering your questions.
Dennis, what are you, what's the date you're looking at?
First week of May 2023.
Rusty and this guy. Who are you with, Mr. Tumlin?
I'm with Tennessee Department of Tourist Development, state of Tennessee.
Are you working with TWRA on the Bill Dance tournaments?
I'm leading the Bill Dance Project, yes, sir.
You said it's going to be about...
You said it's gonna be about a twenty-thousand-dollar commitment from our county?
Local commitment from the county, and then I'm prepared from the state to put some money in. Uh, we don't wanna ask you to do the whole thing, but we're prepared to put some money in to help close that gap. Yes, sir. Thank you. Yes.
Anything else, sir?
No, I was just, Scotty, I didn't.
Hey, great to have you again, I was happy to be with you all before, and I appreciate it. My question to you is this, uh, twenty-thousand-dollar commitment from the county.
Yes.
My question to you is this, and just, you can send it up very quickly, as you can tell, they're kinda rushing me a little bit here. Uh, what's that twenty-thousand dollars gonna do for us, and what is that gonna do on y'all? Is it sort of like a matching thing, and tell, and tell us how it's gonna promote the county, to just, give me a, give me a summary here.
Yeah, so, um, your twenty thousand be broken down, fifteen thousand of that will be host fee, so in that contract, there's, it's called host fee, it's what you pay. If you were hosting the Olympics, if you were hosting the S E C Championship, there's a host fee. Fifteen thousand's host fee, there's about five thousand we see is gonna be called incidentals, that's gonna be some, um, uh, just incidentals that it costs to put on the event. So your mon, your money would be fifteen thousand host, about five thousand incidentals. I'm prepared to kick in some extra money for host fee. I'll close the gap on host fee, which is gonna match what you put in for host fee. Um, dollar-wise, you're gonna put in around twenty thousand, and ideally, um, your funding structure, I'm not sure if you're gonna, where you're gonna pull it from, but ideally, if this was pulled out of the lodging tax, the hotel motel tax, I think it's already obligated, but ideally, where I see it work really well, I do this all over the state, when you collect lodging tax, if you can set a portion of that lodging tax aside, and it's a special fund, the lodging tax was left behind by your visitors, it doesn't, uh, come out of your general funds, lodging tax gets set aside, so when we run across these opportunities, I come in, I say, hey, I'd love to get ten or fifteen or twenty thousand out of your lodging tax, and it replenishes that lodging tax. That's a great spot for it, I think your guys are a little bit different. Um, dollar-wise, you're gonna put five hundred-plus visitors from, the last one I did in Tennessee was about two years ago. Um, you're gonna have about forty states, so the visitors wanna come from about forty states, you'll have some international guests, uh, that will come, uh, at least two or three countries were represented, you will have national media and national press. I will tell you, if any of you guys have ever bought advertising for your business, for the amount of national press you're gonna get, you couldn't touch it for twenty thousand dollars. You are gonna get hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of advertising value for your twenty thousand dollars. It's, it's a pretty cool, um, opportunity.
And you work closely with the Chamber of Commerce and the mayor's office, is that correct?
Yes.
And do you expect, you've been in this position before, none of us really know here, and you expect, since we are off of, uh, the interstate here, and I, as I told you before, it's gonna attract all the, the, the boat dogs and the places like that here, but, and it, and from what you see, we've got a forty-three-thousand-based county here, is this probably revenue gonna be all over the county, it's gonna help everybody, is that, have you seen that happen? Is that gonna happen?
So, so what happens, and, and I've gotten really deep into these weeds, uh, sales tax, so think about somebody that stays in your Airbnb, a couple of places you earn money. If you stay in an Airbnb, state law has changed recently in the last year, if you stay in an Airbnb, which you have short-term rentals all over this lake, you're gonna pay sales tax and lodging tax when you check out, online automatically, you have to do nothing. So you're getting sales tax and lodging tax from your Airbnb. When they hit these restaurants, um, the sales tax at the restaurant, you're gonna get sales tax right there. And, um, fuel, so think about the fuel, they're gonna be buying tons of fuel, if you ever put those, those things, a whole ton of fuel, that money really goes back into T-Dot, and that pays for your road, so there's really a couple of places, um, where you guys are gonna see revenue there. Any questions, Scotty?
There's one more small one, this is a tough one, if you can handle it.
I'm, I'm ready.
I'm gonna prepare you to handle this one.
What's your guy?
When you get these boats that's coming all over, you know about them, don't you, Mayor? You know about the people coming in here, and we're talking about boats, Chair, Mr. Chairman, all over the country, they're gonna be here on Norris Lake. Is it possibility that maybe sometime in the future, you see some kind of revenue with all these boats in the water?
Revenue for the.
From the, from the views of Norris Lake?
Yeah, probably not directly, so your revenue's gonna come from sales tax, lodging tax, and eventually property tax. So the more visitors that come, you're gonna have brick and mortar shows up, you're gonna get property taxes. Um, if the visitors keep coming, uh, people will build lodges and hotels and more restaurants, you're gonna get property taxes.
And the restaurants?
There's not, so right now, they pay a boat registration fee, they register their boat out, T W R A's collecting an out-of-state fishing license. T W R A is putting hundreds of thousands of dollars back into your park, so these parks, the park you're building out there is getting grants. T W R A is getting out-of-state fishing license, it's coming back to public improvement projects and work that your, your public will use year-round. Uh, but you're getting grant money stuck right back in there, but I don't see a boat person paying five dollars that comes to you. I, I don't see how that happens.
No.
Alrighty, sounds good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Dwayne, then rest.
Um, so I, I like to fish myself, um, this fishing series that you're looking at, dealing with stuff like that, um, you said May twenty-twenty-three, that's about the time that it, that gets busy around here.
Yep.
And I know, as a fisherman, people in order to stuff don't share the lake very well, and so, are they prepared to deal with that side of things?
Yeah, they do it all over the country, it's the first week of May, and I know it's busy at the back end, I wish I could plot them, I wish I could have them in February. I really like events in January and February when nobody's on the lake, but this particular one wanted the first week of May. Um, they, they do it all over the country, and, and they'll, they'll manage it, they're, they're respectful, um...
I'm not worried about them irrespective, I just know the people that come down here aren't very respectful, I'm not worried about the fishermen.
They get that everywhere they go, so, so every lake has that guy, you can't fish around my dock, recall this is my dock. You, every lake in the country has that guy, and, and they deal with it.
I, 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 that's not even what I'm talking about, I'm talking about, when you see a guy fishing a cove, or next to a cove, and you got a, a boat going fifty mile an hour past him, or six mile an hour, don't have to wave four foot, five foot.
They get it everywhere they go, they get it, great, great question, thank you.
Dwayne?
I've done.
Rest, this guy.
How many other tournaments are against hosting across the state like this one?
So, in the Department of Tourist Development, I chase a couple a year. Um, this particular event will go all over the country, and they're only gonna hold nine events next year.
In Tennessee?
No, in the, in the country, not.
This Build Dance tournament, you said was part of it, so I know.
So, so this particular event is not linked to the Build Dance project.
Okay.
You, you're gonna be designated a Build Dance Signature Lake, and you will have a Build Dance Signature Access Area. Your access area is gonna help us recruit events that come in and utilize that, that area. This is, this particular event is not a Build Dance, uh, labeled or branded event.
I mean, we've got, with the Moorestown tournament we've hosted over the years, where I think we're up to two-hundred-and-thirty, three-hundred-and-forty boats, and we're, and we actually took part of that property and turned it into R V sites, so there's gonna have to be a lot of logistics put into this.
Yes.
And, and I'm not saying, I'm not against it, I think, when you do something like this, you're bringing people into Campbell County, it's never been here, and I think it's great. There's, there's just so much to it, uh... Can we actually get the chairman of the reg, I think, uh, Dwayne is?
Wayne's chairman of the reg.
Cause we've got till May of next year, I think it'll go with, uh, the Joint Economic Development, I think, Moorestown is gonna be up there Thursday night too, us listing for funds for next year too, and which they probably are secure. Uh, can you call a meeting and get with Mr. Tumlin? And, uh, while I'm sat down, 'cause when Moorestown did theirs, they're kinda odd and inclusive, you remember that? The Smuggins was, was here at the time it took place, and which meant, you know, we couldn't do vendors, we couldn't do certain things, so is this gonna be some kind of inclusive just for this tournament, or is Campbell County gonna be able to do some kind of sponsorships theirself and host vendors to come in and sell products?
So, so typically, their contract will say they have exclusive right on T-shirts on the property, but they welcome, I've seen them welcome Little League sports team, nonprofits, I've seen them welcome some of those, uh, people that wanna sell.
Hot dog stands and stuff.
I've seen them welcome those folks, I kinda got mixed emotions, um, with that, it's good for your Little League team, and I wanna support them if you need to, but I also want those guys really hungry when they leave that boat ramp, 'cause I want them to pull in your first steakhouse, and I want them to pull in your first Mexican restaurant, and I want them to load every table in that Mexican restaurant, where they're gonna pay a sales, or they're gonna pay a sales tax when they, when they eat a big old plate of nachos.
A lot of, a lot of commissioners at the time, I guess it's been ten years ago, as it's only eight years ago, uh, didn't know what was gonna take place. And our first weigh-in that evening was probably around five to six hundred people at that weigh-in. Local people, and two local boys that lives about a mile and a half from me fish right around, they had boat trouble and won that tournament. And it's, and I think most, the majority of them, am I correct, Mayor, has been local people, there's been.
Half at least.
At least half, so, uh, yes, I'm, I'm all supportive of it, you know, coming up with that kind of money, uh, you know, is, is, is hard sometimes. But anyway, uh, if, if Dwayne don't care to carry that through his committee, we'll kinda get, get all fizzled out, see where we're at.
But time-wise, we're hoping to get a contract nailed in about thirty days, we need to let them know, and they're gonna publish their schedule and tell the world that where they're going, so we got about thirty-day opportunity.
Well, more than, more than likely, and, and I can't speak for the Joint Economic Development, uh, no commissioner sets on that, the county mayors, city mayors. Uh, I know sometimes, uh, they get hit pretty hard, uh, they've had, uh, different celebrating the fall, if they gave money for it, I think, um, um, Heritage, Mount Heritage, the festival, the tournaments, they have a high school tournament, uh, and I've actually spoke to their chairman, and actually heard this last week about the funding of some more of these tournaments, but, uh, we need to get with Dwayne, Dwayne needs to be working on this again.
Mayor, then, Scotty, you have comments?
And for, for this event, we're gonna need to factor the Campbell County High School property, the fall parking lot, maybe Knobby Hill Farm.
At this bus.
On top of that, as well as, of course, Cedar Hill Church is part of the parking scheme, so, and, and, and some school buses.
I spoke to your EMS director today, before I even come to you, I said, do you have any concern? I really went through the details of the traffic and what it entails, and he said, it's gonna take us till, we're gonna have to work it out.
You talking about the day months, the E M A, right?
E M A.
Yeah, I'm sorry, E M A. But he didn't have any concern, he was okay.
He's, he's been coasting these, he's been putting all the logistics together, he's actually did a good job, but I know we're out of parking, and we're gonna have to start. We've talked about that last year, busing them in from different areas.
Scotty, just come over.
Thank you, it actually break, build up to a little bit better than a comment at this point. Been said there, you're advertising on the interstate, you, are you guys gonna go with a billboard real quickly, and then are you gonna start at Javacole, put the flowers in the, uh, stop, like the rest areas, and are you gonna put them down here too? That question real quick, and by the way, I know the media these days, and, uh, Facebook and all that is very strong, and you got a place, you're gonna be putting this on your own site, and is that correct? And then, Little Follicle, Trail of Treasure Times, and W L F, a lot of people magnet to that these year. So that being said, I wanna say personally that I welcome the Buckeye State, I welcome Michigan, Ohio, Georgia, everybody, I welcome to come here, because my self-view here is, you have to sell your county to pay your bills and bring good revenue in, and I'm all for that. Now, that question I asked you about the billboards and all that, how you, how you guys advertising for that?
Yeah, so this, so the advertising for this event is up to the organization themselves, they have an amazing platform, multiple millions of people follow these people, so they're gonna put it out on their platform, I've seen them get with the chamber, uh, a month in advance, and ask the chamber to distribute things into all the restaurants, so the chamber has rushed out, I've seen little tabletops on every restaurant in the area that says, coming soon, or here's the dates on this event, I've seen them do that technique, but we leave the market, we want them to do a lot of legwork, but they'll work right with the chamber on going out and promoting it as well. Yes?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just a second. Jack, do you have any questions?
Yeah. One trillion mill, Kim, back.
One point five, around one point five million.
What's your all, all that?
So that, uh, the multiples about three, and, yes. I'm leaving some cards here with Mayor, he has my number, I'll answer any question one-on-one if you wanna call him.
Make sure you want him to.
Thank you, Mayor, appreciate you.
Do you want to?
Thirty days, avoid the.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Chairman, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Yes. No, 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 not yet. I just kinda reversed things a little bit, you know, got back to get some of the comments first and thing, hey, uh... That's something we will be looking at next month. Uh, I was, uh, just quit now, since everything's finished there, and we'll start putting together the agenda for, uh, Monday night. I'll check. Okay, approval of previous minutes, uh, no republic applications approved, now Manny will have this out there, alright?
Which they should have it on there.
I've had, okay, committee reports in minutes, that's the airport, sanitation, recreation, uh, Scott, we're meeting tomorrow night?
Tomorrow night, we discuss the, uh, proposals for the airport committee.
Okay, we've gone through the, uh, approval of the budget amendments and other funding resolutions, and the, uh, approval for the payment of the monthly travel credit card, I think, uh, the county commission has a five-hundred-and-sixty-seven-dollar balance, and the mayor's balance is zero. Uh, reports from county officials and other departments, including Board of Education, and reports from organizations receiving funding from the county. Okay, information purposes, budget approval letter.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Every month, we actually reports every month, uh, the ones that receive funding, and are pretty much, there's mostly everyone on this line. We don't receive them anymore.
We haven't seen them for quite a while.
It's, it's definitely not consistent, um, some of them do on a quarterly, some of them submit yearly, but they do not submit monthly except for patricianship.
Yeah, yes. Okay, moving on down, information, uh, budget approval letter from the Tennessee Comptroller, that's on page fifty-two, fifty-three. Other matters, Campbell County Records Commission lease renewal, uh, I'll need someone to carry that for me.
What is that, Mr. Chairman?
It's the Campbell County Records Commission lease renewal, it's a five-year, uh, no changes.
I'll, I'll carry that, Mr. Chairman. Yes.
That's right, you used to work for Sid and the Father?
Yes, sir. Conflict entered, sorry.
Yeah, that's fine, uh, if anyone else has to carry it for me.
I can quit a day, I can quit a day, come back and do it.
No.
We're not willing, we'll have to get it, 'cause my iPad's still not open for done.
Okay, so you'll carry the Campbell County Records Commission lease renewal?
It's our basic renewal, it's a C L F, yes.
Okay, uh, also the E T H R A Aging Service Grant Contract. Need someone to carry that for me?
I'll carry it, Mr. Chairman.
Get you, carry that one. The E T D D Local Planning Advisory Service Contract, need someone to carry that?
I thought we approved, you talking about the one for the planning commission?
You approved payment last night, this is the contract.
This is the contract. You carry, exactly, carry that, okay? Uh, District Attorney lease agreement, I need someone to carry that, Mr. Kidd, carry that one.
Is it the same basic agreement we had?
Yes.
That means not change?
By knowledge. Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse Service Contract for mental health evaluation and treatment services for criminal defendants charged with misdemeanors only. Need someone to carry that one.
Is that a basic one we've been doing for years, or is that new?
Uh, I think we picked it up a couple years ago, did we not, Mayor? Did we not start this one a few years ago with the?
I'm sure on, uh, you know. Hopefully we'll get our iPads, all this information we're looking at.
You want to carry this one?
If it's, if it's, if it's the basic thing we've been doing, if it's something new, I'd like to meet and discuss, I mean, it's gonna have to be a discussion here if it's new.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, may I ask a few questions?
We have, we have those evaluations ongoing.
Yes.
We've had that service along the up and off.
These things that you're wanting us to carry, is it stuff that, your opinion, that we, like Mr. Horace is saying, that is something we have probably need to be talking about, or is?
Scott, these are things we.
That we've been doing already? Okay, that's fine, thank you, sir.
If you're gonna carry them, you need to research, to make sure that something's changed, I mean, that's what I'll do, if I bring it to the county commission.
Yes, just look at it to make sure that, uh, the monies and everything are, everything correct. Okay, uh...
Okay, Mr. Chairman, the, uh, first item, Housing Rehab Project, that is a contract with, uh, T C A, that has the housing rehab. They want a community meeting in October.
They want a community meeting in October to announce it and recruit folks. You've got about seven hundred thousand dollars for upgrading and potentially replacing dwellings, so you get five or six projects probably consumed. The ladies that came here and presented, they will help build a matrix, a scoring matrix, um, for the applicants, so you can record them. But, uh, they prefer to have a community meeting in October, probably here in the courtroom is the best place for it. But, uh, it's to help low-income folks stay in their homes. Uh, it will actually replace, um, some mobile loans up to a certain amount of money.
So, but no one needs to carry it, it's just that they're going to be coming in October, right?
Correct.
Okay, uh.
And they'll be working through the mayor's office, so they actually have that coming through his office. But the scoring, I would, I would ask them to help you with that, because you're spending part of that grant for their administration.
We won't have to have no, sorry, Mr. Chairman, we won't have to have no, hire nobody to do the scoring process like we did at East Tennessee Development District with the water project.
I don't think so. You already contracted them.
Go ahead, man.
The electronic monitoring images, images, uh, is a piece that came back around, uh, last year. It has to do with ankle monitors for folks that are, uh, going through the court system and on house arrest. That's, I mean, it's a discretionary choice to add cost, because it's going to be an enduring maintenance of effort piece there. But that came out of, uh, the treasurer's office, treasurer's lawyer, so, uh, it, it's, it's a cost savings, uh, to use their program. But, again, it's discretionary.
Okay, we need someone to carry it.
If you want to get them in on the timeline, yes.
Mr. Chairman, and I hate to keep asking, it's, it's hard when you don't have nothing to actually look at, you just need to ask questions. Is that something that has to go through the judicial process, that they have to approve first, Mayor, before we do a contract?
Well, you have to have somebody directed to actually wear the cup.
I know, I mean, the commission can't, we might implement, but somebody, the sheriff department, the judicial section will have to take care of that.
Yes, yes.
Or, or they recommend it?
Uh, treasurer.
You know, Lillard, but, but he's not a, in the judicial side as far as he's on the financial end of the state.
They came to the mayor's office because they see it as a cost savings overall for the county on your overall budget.
But if we get involved in it and the judicial side don't want to fool with it, then it's just a waste. You know, I'm not trying to kick against it, but I think it needs the judicial part needs to be brought involved in it.
Well, I, maybe Bobby Mann could.
Maybe he can, maybe he can give us some.
Eliminate the issue better.
This has came around before.
It has.
And, and the judicial side has always kicked it down.
Right. I'm just moving the information to you.
That's correct.
Is there something that has to be done this month, Mayor?
I, I don't think it has to be done this month, but, you know, Bobby Mann will probably be, uh, the person to speak to, but.
Got you. Okay.
I attended a USDA, uh, presentation, uh, August second, over near their offices there, uh, near the old East Town Mall property. I had some information about programs they offer, and they revisited the Community Development Planning Grant Opportunity that they mentioned a few months ago. And, uh, with new administration coming in, be a great time to, to have a planning process out there funded by USDA. Now, they do have a match, you know, but, uh, that's better than having to pay for the whole thing yourself, but I'll leave this with Amanda, so. But that is all I have.
Okay, very good, thank you, sir. Okay, commissioners. How do you know it's universal? Okay, Scott, you have the floor.
As you mentioned, Johnny, that we're going to meet tomorrow night with the airport committee to go over the, the bid proposals and everything. They median around, set referred, went over it, the, uh, so it will be on the agenda to bring it up for the full body on Monday to be voted on.
Anything else? Rusty, you have the floor.
Mr. Chairman, only thing I have is what you're actually need to carry and I'll research it, that Campbell County Records Commission lease and Department of Mental Health.
If, if you don't mind, once you've looked into it, uh, report back to Amanda, that way if there's anything that you find that the commission needs to know, you can get that information out.
Yeah, bottom line is, this is going to have to be fixed. It's going to have to be bringing information over that iPad, uh, hands a time. But no, that's, that's all I have. I'm kind of be, I'll just carry some stuff if you want.
Thank you very much. Uh, Miss Susan right here, Zach, you have the floor.
For starters, I think Commissioner Stenfield's nation requires suspension of both next week for certain hurdles.
What you said.
That, that came out of the, uh.
But if the committee, if the committee meeting is not filtered more, I don't know.
No, no, no.
Or is this coming from?
We've already had.
Okay, okay, you're good. Okay, I also have the East Tennessee Development District Planning Contract, and then also have a resolution requesting extension of add-on payments from Medicare to EMS. This is the add-on payments that we get from Medicare, right, that is established back in twenty-ten, of course, it was reduced to twenty-fifteen substantially. Um, this is requesting that they continue those payments, but of course, our ultimate plan, we need them to extend this, but we also need to also add the pay that they, um, give us our world status back. But, um, we can't give them payments and they don't extend the program.
Anything else, sir? That's Scott.
Butch?
No, sir.
Scott, you have the floor.
Get back to, real quickly, um, some of these will be comments, we're going to run through them pretty fast, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Get back to, uh, the situation out at Cedar Creek, Mr. Chairman. It starts with enforcement and patrolling, and also, with everything that's going on, you know, it is a state law.
One addition to that, I think, uh, information and education would go a long way, and perhaps you would need less enforcement. I think if people who are doing these rentals online, and many of them are online, were to add something to, you know, their site that says jumping from bridges is dangerous and illegal. Or riding on bridges is illegal, things of that nature. So, looking at information and education as well as enforcement.
Yes, sir. Great information, thank you. Also, Mr. Chairman, I think we, we tried the signs before, uh, we may try to go that route again, lady.
Have you seen, we had talked to Howard.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I'm just talking, sir.
Go ahead, Howard.
And then, uh, the graffiti, I think that, I think we could probably get a control on that possibility, and, uh.
Mr. Gibbs, can I say something?
Yes, sir.
Uh, no, I'm directing this to you. This is people that's, uh, your graffiti and everything, it's, you could paint it. You could spend all day painting it and everything, and that night, they'd come in and they'd put it right back on top, am I correct?
But if there's a camera there taking a picture.
They'll steal the camera.
I stole the money, yeah.
But I understand, what I'm saying, Scott, is, they, they, you know, we can paint it, they'll put it on that night, we can paint it again the next day. But hey, it's, it's something.
It didn't last two weeks when Mr. Hickelbaum had it painted last time, which I agree, it gets dirty, paint it, paint it. But the bad thing is, is the side toward the lake's not getting painted, it's just the inside of the bridge, the traveling part, because it's just as bad, not worse.
The whole thing, yes, you're right.
Scotty, you start the floor.
And, uh, anyway, I, I think, I think, uh, working with the new administration, Sheriff's Department, uh, which maybe we might be able to get some help and we'll work with that. Hopefully, we can get him here, ask some questions, and I think, uh, with the new mayor, uh, he may have some ideas, maybe. Got to look at, add it a lot of angles and see if we can get some kind of, you know, resolving from it, you know? That's my opinion on that issue, but the second issue I have is, I'll continue to, to do what I feel in my heart to do with the animal shelter, to help them. But I think right now, we've got a year to go, but right now, our focus is to, now, I know I'm going to be, all of us are going to be at work with the mayor's office on this one. Uh, Mr. Chairman, we're going to have to do something with EMS to get something resolved, to get these trucks on the road to help these folks with their families dying. We've got to help this, we cannot let this issue here go unseen, it's got to have attention. And I think, I, I don't know how you're going to handle whoever's going to take control or be in charge of this, but I'm willing to help, I'm sure everybody else will too. But we've got to, to, to work closely with EMS and try to help, get some help with this, and we've got to. Because we just cannot continue on, uh, waiting, you know, there's people saying stuff that, you know, such and such is the reason why, uh, it ain't, it ain't because of the animal shelter. That ain't what I'm even talking about. What I'm saying is, that we as a body, the county commission, you know, we're the funding body, we need to take responsibility on these particular kind of issues, Mr. Chairman. Because, you know, again, we've got family members that's dying, we've got, uh, trucks, it's two, five, six, eight hours, I mean, I mean, I know people in this audience tonight that has, has waited and, and it's sad. It really is sad that they can't get help. So I think we all need to get on board on this and, uh, and focus on this, Mr. Chairman. Also, uh, my concerns as, as, as our old officers, uh, in the schools, we, we, we know that we're going to, uh, uh, be pushing for that with this new administration. But I think, if you'll notice, if you get the people coming into these schools and, and, you know, I don't think it's crazy. I think it's a great idea of what I'm about to propose, that everybody has to be on the same wavelength, that, that's me, because having them checked, and it's all over the country, they're doing this now. Because of all the shootings and everything going on, we have to concentrate on the, on the school door's security. It's got to be done. Protection, going in and out of those school doors. It's something that's going to have to be done, whether it's the SRO officers doing it, or, or somebody, or if it's some of the, uh, I, I've heard this, maybe some of the teachers that are licensed will be able to do it. I've heard that several times, but it's an issue, uh, Mr. Chairman, that, that has got to be looked at.
Yes, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Every school in Campbell County has locked doors, has the security doors up front. They also have cameras, which means before I can, if I go to Campbell County High School, before I can get in, I push a button, I tell them what I'm there for, there's a camera looking right at me. They have to buzz me in before I can come in, so we have that in place right now.
I understand and I respect that, Mr. Bruce, but the thing about it is, sir, it has been brought to my attention by several constituents. Not only just my district, your district, the fifth district, everybody's district. It's an issue that has got to be at least looked at with this new administration. It don't take but just a second to, to swap somebody, if they could, it's, when, when they come in the door. I mean, there's nothing wrong with that, uh, Mr. Chairman.
I understand what you're saying. I just want to say, that's, that is a school board issue, that's.
Well, it's something that we, we can, you know, make, make them aware of.
Well, I, I, I understand that, Mr. Gibbs, and, and I think, you know, hey, uh, you're voc- you're very vocal, so hey, I would suggest, hey, you have, uh, school board members in your district. I would, I would go talk to them, if, if the concerns you have here, the evidence, please, uh, visit your schools and you'll simply talk to them, go ahead. I got it, hold on. Go ahead, Scotty.
That being said, another issue, the, the, the project's on, uh, Highway sixty-three is running smooth, everything's, uh, about updated from what they said, twenty-three, twenty-five. So that issue's going very well, also for the folks up that, in that, in our second, in the second district, all the way to the county line. And that will be considered as second and the first district, of course. As something we want to talk to, uh, Commissioner, who we elected, Gibbs, uh, and Commissioner, uh, Beverly Hall. Is I think the Davis Chapel Community Building, I think, I understand it belongs to the county, if I'm mistaken, that was Mr. Gibbs. Uh, I, I would like to either talk, maybe talk to the school system here, I've been approached by several people, maybe it's a possibility, there's plenty of room. Uh, I don't think we've talked about this, Mayor, but plenty of room maybe for a, uh, Veterans Memorial, maybe, if we could take that and level it, there's a lot of room. And I think, uh, I've been approached by several constituents, not just in my district, but other districts, so if that's something that you and I can, and with Beverly and Ms. Hall, we ought to talk about, maybe talk to Gibbs. It's right in the heart of our district, the building's decaying, I mean, you either redo it, I mean, it's just, I'd like to see what we can do with, through the school, the school systems, see if we can, you know, kind of work with them on that, maybe do something like that. But other than that, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to go, thank you.
Okay, now you're carrying, uh, a couple items, correct?
I'll get with her at the end, and I'll get those.
I've carried the Aging Services Grant Contract, the District Attorney Lease Agreement.
What's the last one?
The District Attorney Lease Agreement, both listed under Other Matters as item two and item four.
Okay, but thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's it.
Tyler, you have anything? Whip?
Uh, I'd like to, I'd love to, Mr. Bill, I can try to read lines, hope you can, you know, do a job.
And, sir, you've done a good job, indeed, eh? Hey, listen, hey, I, I still, I would, hey, it's, it's been a preparation. Mike Douglas is not here? Mr. Davis?
All right. First item I got is, this was discussed this week in Buildings and Grounds, we have discussed several different times. We just now got the quote from Tony Hill. Uh, y'all know we've having problems with the security system, the lights, the locks at the jail, and the, we need to put out for bid. It's going to be close to four hundred thousand dollars, three hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars. We need to use the infrastructure, the money, the LP money, and, and pay for it, that's the only way, that's the only way we're going to get the money. But we need to get this put together and put out for bid and get that system fixed. Uh, y'all know, we've, we've had a fire or two down there and riots, and, and it's destroyed some of the property, and, uh, this needs to be put out for bid, and. Tony knows more about it than I do, but, uh, if y'all got any questions, you can ask me, then I'll ask Tony, but, uh, he shared it out. But this is something that's going to be done, it's got to be done, and if we don't do it with this money, and we don't have it to do it, it's got to be done, then it's going to be taxes, so. That's all for it. Any questions, I'm, if not, that's what I'll be carrying, Monday night, let Tony put this together, put it out for bid.
Any questions?
Yeah, I do, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Jim.
Uh, didn't they fix some of that problem with some kind of software update, or is that correct?
They tried.
And didn't do it all good?
No. The problem is, you've got an analog cable with digital cameras using a converter box. The company made the converter boxes, went out of business in twenty-twelve.
It's like the company years ago, we built the first jail, lock company went out of business, we had to change all the locks, that's, uh, it's, it's a money, it's a money machine.
Yeah, a money, though, though, we need to go to digital, digital cable, digital cameras, and that.
Cat five cable, do a way, though, land locks down?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, any more questions?
That's a hard question.
And, oh, yeah, so that, that project then will be brought up next week to Tony put the specs out and finance, put it out for bid.
Anything else, sir?
Anything else I need to know on that, Tony? That it?
I don't think so.
Okay, that's all on Buildings and Grounds. Now on, uh, sanitation, we're going to meet this afternoon, uh, as most of you are aware. Year or so ago, we had a contract with Jellicoe to transport their own garbage to the landfill, and we gave them a six-hundred-ton allotment. Uh, they advised us, oh, a couple months ago, that they no longer wanted to take it to the landfill, they won't bring back the tow string. But they would take it to the landfill if we would pay them to take it, forty-two dollars a ton. But, they would take it to the landfill if we would pay them to take it, forty-two dollars a ton, with a contract. They would take it, we'd pay them, plus we'd pay the tip and fee. And also, if we didn't want to do a contract, we could pay the city Jellaco fifty dollars a ton to take their garbage and dispose of it. They made the comment that, the state says you have to advise a place to dump. Well, that is true. It doesn't say where. Now, it is a place to dump over there. Our sanitation department, when it was put together thirty-five, forty years ago, was not designed for all the cities to bring their garbage over there. It got turned around and ended up everybody bringing it. So, the night in the workshop meeting, it was voted on, that the city of Jellaco can take their garbage to the landfill, will continue paying the tip and fee. They have a six-hundred-ton allotment per year. Anything over that, they will pay forty-two dollars a ton for it, as continued, not to come back to Jellaco. And it's also voted to give the other four cities, till January the first, to be prepared to take their garbage over there. Sanitation is going to figure out the allotment and how much ton per year they've been bringing in the last three years. And whatever that allotment is, we'll give them a, maybe extra hundred ton for their, for their fuel and cost. And they'll take theirs over there, and the county will pay for their tip and fees. It was past your announcement, so that will be what we'll be voting on next week, is to send the cities to the landfill.
Mr. Chairman?
You want to take questions?
Yeah, go ahead, yeah.
Scotty, go ahead.
Well, the municipalities, Jacksboro, Carrieville, and LaFollic, they're, they're allowed so many tons per year, is that correct?
Right.
Okay. The big point being, you just say Jellaco is.
What's your question? Well, Jellaco is because they're going to the landfill. Right now, anything that the cities is bringing to us, they, we, there's, there's no lock. They bring it every week.
But you're, you're saying that you're going to be, your motion's going to be, they've got until January, the rest of Jellaco, I mean, even Jellaco, Jacksboro, LaFollic, Carrieville's got until January to, to get it together, maybe get a truck, and we're going to be paying the tip and fee. And, you're, you want this, this commission to vote for them to take it over or not to Jackson, is that correct?
Correct. Well, they, which you all know, when, last time, when it first started, it's my understanding and the way the bylaws wrote, that the sanitation department took the local garbage, the people, the individuals. The cities were taking theirs to the landfill. Then it got turned around, one started bringing it over because they had the equipment problem. Next thing, and I would all afford them this, right? It's costing, right now, this county, sixty dollars a ton to take that garbage from Jacksboro to the landfill. Okay? Now, we're, we're double handling it when they bring it to us. All that's going to do is our calculation. It ain't going to cost us no more to pick it up. All we're asking them to do, they'll spend one, the timeframe for a front-end loader, back-end loader, to go from Jacksboro to landfill and back, is hour and a half. We're asking them to spend an hour and a half more a day to take their garbage over there, and, I'm going to say, ten, ten ton, I'll say, three hundred dollars. When they bring it and dump it at Jacksboro, it's nine hundred for us to take. It just adds all that expense of loading it and still paying the tip and fee. So, all they're going to be out is a little bit of fuel. And they got their man working anyhow. But that's, that's what the committee wanted, it was going to be, and your city, they, all your four cities are already charging their citizens a fee to pick up their garbage. Their taxes, county taxes, is to help them with their garbage. So, the cities are paying twice, and, and they're ready, with the money that they're spending to get rid of it. If we can save that money, then we can do more, more for the rest of the county in different ways. And, you know, we're looking, maybe, at a tax increases this term. And we're going to look at ways to save the money and quit, quit double dipping. I mean, it's, it's up to you guys, but it was safe, and I don't know for sure, but a couple hundred thousand dollars a year to send the cities to the landfill, and it won't cost them but very little, just fuel, time, where it's costing us fuel, time, and equipment, and tip and fee, and all. So...
So, we'll be paying the tip and fees too?
We would pay, they would take it to the landfill, dump it, just like Jellaco was doing. They write it up on Campbell County, and we pay. They don't pay nothing, they will not pay one penny. All they do is drive over and dump it, and dump it on the county. And we pay the tip and fee. And then, right now, they're bringing it to us, we're reloading it, we're transporting it over there, and it's already on their truck. If they're dumping it on us, we're reloading it, then taking it back off again. And it's, but, you can, as I say, if it's costing them ten dollars a ton, it's costing us thirty. And they're, they're already getting paid good money to carry it, so, I mean, that's, that was what the committee voted on.
You'll be bringing that up Monday night?
Yes, sir, I will.
Okay. Anything else?
No, I'm good.
Okay, so it comes in?
I reckon I'm in. That's it.
Okay. I've been asked to put together a committee to look at possibly doing an economic and community development director, someone to write grants for us, have to write grants, someone to help us with our local businesses. Matter how many jobs that we lose at George's, make, you know?
Two thirty-seven.
Two hundred and thirty-seven jobs. You know, so hey, we need to be looking at ways that we can keep our people in Campbell County and provide them a job. And what I'd like to do...
We have those jobs available right now, but if you want those back...
Yes, sir. Yes, I agree. What I'd like to do is, I'd like to put together a committee, one commissioner out of each district, and the new county mayor, and you guys meet next week and start putting something together. So, hopefully, we can, you know, bring the jobs back, or bring industry back to give these people a job. Mr. Lynch, would you mind sitting on that committee?
Be fine.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Going to the first district. Zach, since you're the only one coming back, would you like to serve on that district? I mean, would you like to serve on that committee? Okay, thank you. Scotty, since you're the only one coming back in the second district, would you like to serve on that committee?
It'd be an honor, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Rusty, would you like to serve on that committee?
One of the other two commissioners would rather serve.
Dwayne? Huh? Okay. Dwayne, sit here.
Okay.
Dwayne, serve, maybe?
He's the top lobbyist, so he...
Okay.
So, until get down, we'll get these committees, it's my turn next.
Hey, Dwayne, he's sitting, yeah, buddy. Go, will you serve for the fourth district?
Yeah, I'm going to.
Okay. Tyler, will you serve?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Okay. Guys, if you don't mind, I'd like to set a meeting date for next Tuesday for you guys. And, be thinking about it. Hey, talk to people...
The committee had to be approved through the commission.
On Monday night?
Monday night. Why are you calling the committee?
It's just a, an economic community, uh...
Committee?
You know, look to possibly hiring a person to do our grants, also help with our local businesses, and also maybe be a liaison, you know, from this body to the local businesses, or so forth.
Okay. DCC.
DCC, okay. And, I'll be carrying that, Amanda, and we'll get it passed Monday night, and if you guys don't care, we hear at six o'clock would be good for everyone.
The only, this will be a non-statutory...
Be a non, but once, once they've done what needs to be done, then the committee will be dissolved.
And then, then it'll come through, anything they perform will be counted through the county commission approval?
Yes, sir. Everything has to come through this body. And that's all I have. Dwayne?
I've got a few things, actually.
Dwayne, just a second, Dwayne. Guys, I'll entertain a motion to extend for fifteen minutes.
Chairman, I'll make a motion to extend fifteen minutes.
Just a second. You have a motion to extend? Okay, we extend.
First one, either the mayor, or maybe even Tyler might be having an outfit on this. On the food trucks that come in here, when they come in here, do they have to buy a business license or anything to operate in Campbell County? Do we get any of the tax dollars for the sales tax on them? Okay. Next thing is, I want to do a proclamation next week for the campaign all-star, supposedly ICU team, for being runner-up, so, in the state, so, I'd like to do a proclamation for that. Next thing is, is Kensington Place, that subdivision came through, originally came through the Seale-Fall Planning Commission, and it was built to the specs. Mr. Rockwell had went and looked at it and everything, and he agreed that it met the specs that was originally done. And so, we are going to get, want to talk to Ron and get a letter from him to add it to the, the county road list.
And if I may say, that, just one here, that was going to be actually annexed to LaFollic, and they chose not to, and the commission chose not to annex it, or let it be annexed. So, it's actually reverted back to the county. So, they've been sitting in limbo for a long time.
So, as I said, that has been a way, it's... Right.
But it's all, so, it's already passed, all the planning commission approves, but it was picked up. And Ron said it's not going to be one of those that will be picked up and be paid overnight. It's going to take a while at least, but they'll have snow removal and some potter patching. It fits all at will, come from Jordan Rockwell, he's testing the value, and he brought it to our attention the other night, the planning commission.
And then, the next thing, kind of brought us to the sanitation, and I know this is going to be a wrong ordeal, but we definitely get some metal tow string with the water, definitely get the water turned, okay?
Got you.
Whatever that, whatever we got to do on that, because there's just going to be a fatality or something there, I don't care. That's all I got.
Can I say one thing? Wait just a second. Scotty, go first.
Mr. Chairman, I got it wrote down here, you know, for the meeting, and even the sanitation about what we're talking about, directly to me, if you may. Also, keep in mind, some of the municipalities that we're dealing, you know, are municipalities, the trucks are really not big enough to handle these loads, especially in an eight-hour day shift. I want to make sure we understand, I'm not supporting this at all. I just want to make sure that, again, the city of LaFollic's big trucks are not big enough and timed enough during the day to be able to do this. And, you know, it, it don't look like it's going to be feasible for them to do that, so therefore, I'm not going to support this.
Thank you. Okay, Joe?
I, the thing I say about, we use this as a landfill, known as a convenience center. That, you know, tow string's a convenience center, not a landfill.
Rusty?
The only thing is, Dwayne mentioned about the water. I talked to Ron, and, and he just needs to have Brett Bill reach out to him, he said, and he's going to put his laptop breaks. I think they did some ditching Friday evening, and Saturday, when all the flooding was going on, it wasn't as bad. I was there, when all that flooding torn off, my house was flooded out also. But Ron said he could go through there and do some of that curbing and the burb, and if Director Rutherford would reach out to me. Don't forget, keep in mind, and I hope that, I think Amanda's going to reach out to the commission members and hopefully the mayor, the orientation for August the twenty, I think, twenty-second, twenty-third, the commissioners need to attend that and the mayor on those dates. And I hope, no, Zach, if you...
We don't picture your setup, I'm already going.
That'll work.
Thank you. Brad?
One thing. I had Dean Church cut me and built, and, and this apartment, when I was advised, had been the chairman of, I've got this, buildings and grounds, you know, we had a leak in the building for buildings for several months. And, just for safety and protect the county, Tony Hill, I asked him to, since he was neutral, and he was, he's our buildings and grounds supervisor, he went and investigated and took pictures for me, and we looked at this building to make sure that there was no mold. That way, if someone comes up, say there was secret mold, then, you know, we'd have proof that it wasn't there. So, as of today, there's no mold in the building. And, and there's no one occupying the building except Bill, the secretary of the county. So, this was to clarify, to make sure that, I know some people got mad, but I asked Tony to keep it secret, just go in, take pictures, do the report, and bring it back to me, and, and he did. And this was, I'm only, this was Amanda, they can put it in the records, as the pictures that was taken and all the evidence that Tony wrote out. And I appreciate you, Tony, for doing that. And it was just to protect the county, and it's good.
Is information purpose on?
Yes. And, and Scotty, and during our meeting, he agreed with everything we talked about, about having the land, having everybody take it to the landfill, so he's...
That's what he gets, Mr. Davis.
That's fine, that's fine.
Totally.
Thank you, that's fine.
All right.
Pretty much appreciate it. Dwayne? Have you not missed this?
Oh, yes.
Jack?
Bring him back, Jack.
Welcome aboard. You know? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. We stand adjourned.